Howdy, everybody. Today is Tuesday, June twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five, and the time is six P M. We're here for the regular, or excuse me, a special call session of the Coppell City Council. We do have a quorum present, so I will call the meeting to order. We will be convening into executive session in the first floor conference room. At the end of the executive session, I'll come back out and announce work session, at which time the public is invited and encouraged to attend. Thank you.
...
Good afternoon, everybody. We have adjourned from executive session at six fifty-five and are moving into work session in the first floor conference room. There will be no citizens comments available during the work session, but those will be heard during the regular session of our citizens appearance. The public is invited and encouraged to join us in the first floor conference room. Thank you. It's a pretty short agenda. We've got a presentation and then, actually, this is going to be a first. We're going to consider, we don't even have a consent agenda, so we've got approval of the minutes. Is the majority of the, anybody have any questions or comments? Kevin?
Nothing, yeah, nothing, sir.
All right, well, let's move on. Item B is a discussion regarding chickens and chicken coops by Councilmember Walker.
Thank you, Mayor. Y'all may remember, at least some of you, I think it was back in twenty twenty, first name Rebecca Visconti proposed an ordinance that would allow for egg-laying hens to be used. Oh, does anybody have the PowerPoint? Y'all want to pull it up? Do we have it on the screen? Okay, we'll just use the hard copy. So, and I was really taken with that, and of course lately, more often than not, oh, here we go. You know, I think we've got easily one of the finest farmers markets in North Texas, but every time I go and ask for the farm-fresh eggs, they're sold out. And, you know, they're just really popular. And, you know, this is certainly something I'd like to do, and I, I actually think that there's quite a few people in town that already have egg-laying hens. Because there, there does seem to be quite a bit of support for this. And so I wanted to bring it back up and see if we could, if y'all would consider an ordinance. So, now I'm just making the proposal to see if there's thumbs up for Mr. Maynard staff to prepare an ordinance for everyone to consider. But I'd like to see about, about having that. Let's see, can I just press the, there we go. So, you know, there's a lot about this in terms of teaching kids where food comes from, responsibility for, you know, pets and that sort of thing. And I think there's a lot to that. I know that some of the people that have done it have actually used it in part for that reason. You know, the eggs that you get when you have egg-laying hens in your backyard like this, I mean, the yolks are just absolutely brilliant. They're super healthy. And there's a lot of interest these days in knowing where your food is coming from. You know, we have a lot of people with gardens in town. You know, I forget what they're called, the stand-up gardens. There are a lot of people growing their own vegetables, and this is kind of part of that whole movement. And, and I think it'd be a real healthy thing for our community to be able to, to at least allow them to do this with some, you know, guidance from the city. Right now, to the extent that we have people doing it, there is no guidance, and I, I just think it'd be good for us to go ahead and allow it, but at the same time to put some guardrails on it so that neighbors and everyone else that are not as interested will also be protected. You know, there's a lot of different ways to house the egg-laying hens. If your yard's big enough, there are actually these small coops that you can move around and let them fertilize your yard as, as you move it. There's others that are stationary, but it requires, you know, thi- this is actually a fairly decent commitment of time and energy and money. You know, it costs a few hundred dollars to buy a couple of hens. It costs a, you know, certain, several hundred dollars potentially to buy a suitable enclosure. They don't really require any veterinary costs. They tend to be fairly healthy, and they can eat all sorts of stuff that you would normally throw away in terms of food scraps. They eat all sorts of bugs and weeds and everything else, and so it's, it's a very healthy practice that, that a lot of people want to incorporate into their daily lives. These are all the communities that already have ordinances allowing for backyard chickens. So basically, everybody but us. And I think it's because, you know, there is a real interest for this. It's not unique to Capella, and I think the city's decided they would rather go ahead and, and have some guardrails around it as opposed to just not have anything at all. So here's an example of kind of comparison of different ordinances. Carrollton has a permit, the others don't. There are certain enclosure requirements, including, you know, setback requirements that you can incorporate into the ordinance. There's limits on the number of chickens you can have. Some relate to the size of the property, some don't. But the one thing that, and I think actually this has changed, I think South Lake changed and got rid of the roosters pretty quick. Egg-laying hens don't require roosters. The eggs that we eat are not inseminated eggs, and so there's absolutely zero reason to have a rooster waking us all up at dawn. So I would certainly favor the no-rooster clause of the ordinance. And, you know, Flower Mountain lets you have some other, like homing pigeons and stuff like that. I, I'm just limiting this just to the hen-laying, the egg-laying chickens. So those are the kind of things that other cities have done. Here's Frisco. You know, they allow turkeys and pheasant too. Of course, that may change as they get more developed up there. So, you know, we're really kind of about the only major city left in North Texas that doesn't have an allowance for this, but also doesn't have some, some guidelines for the citizens. You know, everywhere that, other cities that have tried this, there's quotes from three, three of our cities. They, they've been happy with the results. And happy particularly with the no-roosters, and almost all the structures that you, that you can buy for this are designed to prevent predators from accessing the hens. And of course, if you pay a couple hundred dollars per hen, you sure don't want to feed the coyotes with them. So it's a fairly, you know, serious investment of time and money and energy. So I don't think it'll, we'll turn around one day and we'll have, you know, five thousand households with, with coops. But I do think those that would like to, to source their own food and that see the health benefits of this and some of the other side benefits and training their children about it and all like that, I think they should be allowed to do it. There's some examples. Of course, we can always go to other cities and look to see their ordinances. We have a fantastic city attorney that's entirely capable of drafting our own. But here's some examples of enclosure requirements and how those provide, at the bottom there, it's unlawful to knowingly possess a rooster. Of course, the rooster would be totally superfluous. There's no need for it, so I don't, I don't think that would be a problem with respect to any of this. So, you know, the details in respect to just looking at the general size of Watson Capella and the experience of other people. You know, what I'm proposing is four hens per household for lots, less than seventy-five hundred square feet, up to six hens for lots, seventy-five hundred square feet or larger. One, one thing that I've learned about this is that some of the people that go out and get four hens realize very quickly they've got quite a bit of eggs that they need to dispose of. These hens are prodigious egg layers, and the eggs can get a little bit ahead of you unless you really have a large family or so. You know, you, you want to use a little discretion and maybe start with two hens and then work it from there if you're not getting enough eggs. And then, of course, that would be a secure pen or enclosure. We could look at setback requirements and, and where, you know, it wouldn't necessarily be like, I mean, no bright orange chicken houses or anything like that. You know, they have to kind of comport with the rest of the character of the, of the neighborhood. And, you know, to the extent that HOAs would preclude it, then I think that that would still predominate. But at least then the people that live within the HOA could, you know, prevail upon their HOA to allow them to either have an exemption on a one-off basis for each of them or to just simply allow it, and at least they would be closer to the people that would be making the rules and they could, they could negotiate with them as they wish. So that's the proposal. Glad to answer any questions that y'all might have.
Ramesh?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman, Councilmember Walker, thank you for the wonderful presentation. Looks like, looks like you put a lot of time and effort into it.
A lot of this is from, I've got to give credit where it's due. Rebecca Visconti is an incredibly talented, successful professional here in town, and she has a whole group of people in town that really support this and would like to see this happen. So much of the research is, should be credited to her.
And I, I did a little bit of my research and found a lot of the benefits of having chicken in the backyard. Now, I, I'm in support of this. The one exception I would like to discuss is the, I mean, some of the cities have the local nuisance laws. So for those neighborhoods that don't have an HOA, I, I would like to give the neighbors some tools if there's a problem. So that's only change-out request.
So, I mean, absolutely, I think all that can be discussed while looking at the actual ordinance. So, I mean, absolutely, I think all that can be discussed before looking at the actual ordinance.
What were, um, thank you, Jen, for all this and the presentation. There's a lot of, there's a lot of pros. I feel like last time we also had cons, and can anybody, staff-wise, remind me?
I was at the meeting.
Yeah, okay, what were the cons? I know that there was, um, I think we, there were rooster concerns and you taking care of that, I think also where you house them.
sanitation issue.
Sanitation and a couple other things. What else?
Yeah, I mean, these really, the whole sanitation and the smell and all like that, that's really kind of a myth that they, they're just chickens, they don't really smell like anything. Now, obviously, if you've got a coop, you've got to clean it.
Right.
That's part of it, and if you don't clean it, they get sick and they don't lay eggs and then, you know, it kind of defeats the whole purpose. So this is, you are assuming responsibility. It's like having a pet that requires daily care, except the pet just happens to be able to give you eggs you can boil or scramble or whatever, that you know where they came from, you know, no hormones, no anything else. But I'll be real honest with you, one reason that this kind of stuck with me and one reason I wanted to bring it back was because I really kind of felt like it just didn't get a serious listen. You know, it was a very serious presentation, and I just remember there's, I think there was a Green Acres remark made, and I don't know, I just...
I don't, yeah, I don't remember the meeting.
I feel like it was, for some reason, it just really kind of stuck with me and tugged at me.
Yeah.
Because I think this is something, and now even more so, you know, with the bird flu and you have all this stuff, you know, they're killing chickens in these giant, I don't know if you've ever seen a big chicken farm, but they're hideous. This is such a different thing, you know, and these chickens are really pretty amazing-looking animals and...
I grew up with chickens, so I totally get it, and I, that's why I'm like, I, yeah, so that, I mean, that's why I'm just, um... I don't know, does anybody have any questions? I, I have mixed feelings and I just, I feel like I need to, um, I don't know.
Bijan? Yeah, so, did you say we have people raising chickens in Capel today?
I'm sure we do. Up, up, there, there.
Yeah, so they're just doing it undercover, yeah.
Yeah.
So today we require a permit?
No.
No, there's no order allowed.
Not allowed.
No, 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 okay.
But there you go.
They're banded chickens.
And control, if they know of them, will ask them to relocate them.
Okay, so if we do have ordinance, we will obviously get complaints from neighbors or noisies or whatever it may be.
Right. Well, that was kind of an interesting point, Bijan, because I wasn't aware that we get a lot of complaints, as it is, and we have them in town. So, I mean, I don't know, do we get a lot of chicken complaints? Do y'all know?
You'd have to call police, there'd be noise complaints, and the police department would respond to that.
I've never seen any of our officers handcuffing a chicken.
I've had one other city that is struggling with this. And so they had the police department, police department had noise complaints and they walked around chickens and other things that people had out there, but they were noise complaints, they were generally rooster-based. But they didn't allow chickens either, so they were banded chickens there.
So my question is, how are we going to enforce no-roosters allowed? If somebody comes saying, the staff, hey, I see that, so the staff have to go, and what do we do next?
Well, it would be the animal control would go out and tell them they have to relocate it. But that's going to be pretty obvious, because every time the sun comes up, the roosters are going to start going nuts. So you're going to, you're going to hear them big time.
You're going to hear them, yeah, every morning.
And that's why, Southlake originally, this is my understanding, I haven't talked to anyone in this municipal government over there, but Southlake said, sure, they just thought you needed roosters with the egg-laying chickens, and then they found out you don't. But they also found out that at dawn every time, the roosters go nuts. And so they've changed ordinance, is what I understand, although I wasn't able to confirm that before I did actually look it up. But I think they've changed it now to get rid of the roosters.
So one more question for the staff, do we have enough resources to handle complaints if we pass this ordinance? I know speculating or anticipating, that may not be, you know...
It's not us, so I don't...
Oh, it's not us?
No, that's wrong.
That will...
Unless we need a permit, then it would be, unless we said that permits needed, that would go through your department.
But I would probably do get permits if it's early days.
Oh, good.
Like with dogs.
Kevin?
Yeah, I actually was kind of thinking...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, no, let him go, I'll go after it.
No, I'm so sorry, Graham, I thought you were, um...
No, go ahead.
So that's kind of where I'm leaning is, I mean, right now we have a, our dogs, like, have to be, you know, you're supposed to have a permit for them, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
I mean, so it's, I know, you know, it's kind of the same thing, like, you know, we have a permit fee that you go through and at that point, there's a registry and then you have an idea of who has chickens and stuff like that. So I think that we do wind up going down this path, was it Carrollton, I think, in your presentation that has a, that requires a permit? I think that we should, we should highly consider that, because at that point, you can identify, you know, registered, you know, you've got registered chickens, if there are complaints or violations and stuff, we can, I think it's probably easier to keep track of that. And then there may be some enforcement side that says like, well, hey, you, you know, you've got neighbor complaints, you're not cleaning your coop, you know, stuff like that. You are hereby unauthorized to have chickens, you know what I'm saying? Like, and coming to Ramesh's point, that might be a way for us to, you know, neighbors to have, you know, a say or, you know, like, and there'd be some sort of regulation there.
Well, I mean, even like with the structural requirements and the setbacks and stuff like that, I mean, you know, as a predicate issuing the permit, you could have an inspection and make sure that it's all in compliance with the other aspects of the ordinance.
And that would fall under your team, right? And we, yeah, okay, sorry, let me...
I just don't know how many we're really talking about, it might not be more than fifty.
And I, and I think that's, that was going to be my question is like, I know we've had this presentation, it was a while back, right? But...
It's a different council?
A different council, just happened to be here. Because never had anybody say we'd like to have chickens, don't get me wrong. Like, we know people who have eggs and so, or we go to the farmer's market or we add ourselves to some list so that we don't just show up and there are no eggs and things like that, right? Um, and then I've heard of people who have it, they end up with an abundance, and so, you know, good, and if they can share, that's great. I just, I'm curious how, how popular, but what's the need for this? Like, are we talking ten households, are we talking a hundred, are we talking a thousand? Like, I guess I just, I don't, I don't know what we're solving for other than dealing with the people who currently are doing it and they're not supposed to be. And then, kind of like carports, right? And so now we're going to go out and we're going to add and inspect and make sure that they're all in compliance. I, and I don't know, and this is just, I'm just playing the other side here, right? Like, don't get me wrong, I grew up out in the country, I grew up with chickens, I think they're great, but I also had a rooster and, you know, my job also was not to clean the coop, because, yeah...
Mine was.
Well, there you go, so, and that's just a whole other ballgame that, um, I have enough issues with, you know, neighbors and their stuff and rats as a result, and, you know, and so I'm thinking all the negative effects that come with it, or chickens flying over, I mean, I have ducks that come into our pool and now I'm going to have chickens coming, whatever it might be, right?
Yeah, I don't think these chickens really fly very far.
Well, yeah, probably not, they just hop around or, yeah, coyotes.
I don't know how often you'd even let them out of the pen.
Yeah, and again, I'm trying to figure out like, right, like, when people wanted pickleball, we had a whole bunch of people out there that were like, we want pickleball. How many people want to have chickens?
Well, I know Rebecca, the last time, had a hundred and twenty or a hundred and forty people on a petition. Represented different households, and I really kind of think too, it's a little bit of a different age. I think people are more sensitive to sourcing their food now than they were in 2020 when this first came up. People back then hadn't seen a price spike of, you know, eight, nine, ten dollars a dozen and stuff like that too. So I really think that if this was allowed, you might see some other people take it up. I mean, I'm seriously considering it, just getting a couple of them, just because Shree loves having eggs every morning and they'd be pretty cool. So I think you'd see more people go ahead and try it.
If there was an ordinance in place, we'd give chickens, right?
But, yeah, I think so, I think I would. You know, I don't have it now, I just don't have a fence, so I mean, I'd have to get like a Fort Knox, so...
One of the things, if we do craft an ordinance, I'd like the structure to be not visible from the street.
Well, a lot of the, some of the other ordinances do provide that sort of thing.
Yeah, that would be important to me. I grew up not quite as countryfied as Brianna, but we had chickens in our backyard. And we didn't, we weren't limited to roosters, so we had, you know, the whole gamut. And they, they're, the roosters were noisy. You know, the other thing is, a hen will produce a couple of eggs a day during the summer, maybe three, kind of depends on the hen. So you can get a lot of eggs that you're not expecting, but then in the winter, they drop down significantly.
Hmm, I didn't know that.
Yeah, it's very, it's daylight, four-handed.
I'll be darned.
They'll produce like one every three days in the winter.
Oh, cool.
See, you guys didn't know I was a country guy. Okay, Kevin?
On the, kind of your request over here, you're talking about four hens per household and then six for a larger lot. Is there anything specifically tied to that number? Is that, was that a number that just the group said? And the reason why I'm asking is like, is two enough? You know, if, if, if you've got...
Yeah, I think this depends on what you want.
Yeah.
But in terms of a limit, you know, that was the limit that, you know, a lot of the folks that are interested in this...
Texas A&amp;M, excuse me, Mayor, Texas A&amp;M does have standard for urban livestock. So there's a maximum number of chickens per square foot. So, and I think that they use that handbook to, for A&amp;M to drive some of what square footage is and how many birds or black-bellied birds and all that other stuff.
Not going to lie, I was not expecting to hear a number presented in chickens per square foot today, so I appreciate that.
You know, I think, I don't know if that's where that came from, but I think that would probably be a pretty good standard.
Yeah, I don't have the handbook, well, I do have the handbook. I dropped my chicken file.
Your chicken handbook.
Wow!
I have a chicken book.
You weren't, you weren't planning to expand this to other types of fowl, were you?
No, just egg-laying hens.
Okay.
Turkeys.
See, these are generally accepted agricultural practices for urban... Do you want turkeys?
Brianna?
Um... I'd be curious, I mean, I guess the question is, are we looking to do, are we, are we looking for direction today? And kind of be, you point with like resources. I, you know, I think a lot of that came from, like you said, from, you know, the research that was done last time. But from a staff perspective, I don't know, like, is there an opportunity? I mean, if the, if the majority of council wants to go with, hey, let's start crafting the ordinance, bring it back, we can look at it. In the meantime, I'd love to know from staff, talking to staff at other cities, what have been, what's been the good, the bad, and the ugly? And do we need another half resource, right? What, has there been time that, time that's allocated to this? I don't know, I just, I just want to make sure that we're also being mindful of animal control or noise issues or permit requests or, right, everything comes with something else, so...
Yeah.
And for us just to be prepared, right, if we go forward with it and we have the ordinance, great, but then we're going in and we all know what we're going in with, and maybe it is two hen, like, hey, you know what, two is perfect, you don't really need, you don't need four for these reasons. And then that helps us tweak the ordinance along the way, right? Want to make sure you don't see the coop from the street, right? Make sure it's not bright orange or burgundy or whatever color you want it to be.
Burgundy's good, though.
I don't know, I'm just saying, like, is there a way for us to kind of know what we're getting into?
So we could, if I get four of you to say yes, we could certainly have staff go forward with a proposal of what this would look like. And then that would come back before us, which would then go to Bob for an ordinance.
Okay.
I, I do, I understand her point, you know, we don't know the unintended consequences.
They know, that's a, that's a better way of saying it.
Well, I think, I think it'd be wonderful to have staff benefit from the lessons of the other cities, yeah, absolutely.
Let's know before we go in.
Okay, so we're about time for city council, I think we've exhausted this topic. I will tell you, you know, the chicken thing, that was, Jen, maybe it didn't look like we took it seriously, but the council did listen very thoroughly. There was a lot of discussions after the fact on that.
That's what I remember, yeah.
It was, it was, it was taken seriously.
Good, good, good.
I remember talking about it, that's why I was trying to figure out when that was and what were the outcomes of that conversation.
It may have been while we were on Zoom, Jer, I don't remember, I do remember the presentation, but I don't remember exactly when.
It was on Zoom, it was on Zoom, some of us were here.
That's what it was during COVID?
Yeah.
It was in 2020.
Yeah, as a result, rather than going to the store.
Because it was...
Chicken book?
I just want to know that if y'all have chickens, I'd love to buy or take eggs off your hands because I don't plan to have any, because my dog will not appreciate that.
No commercial enterprise.
Need to, Kevin?
I, I guess I would be in support of taking the next step in terms of finding out more information, having staff gather information. I would love to hear from our animal services, people themselves, and I would love to learn about their capacity. You know, do they have the proper infrastructure to be able to, I do think a permitting solution is the way to go, considering that lines up with our, with our dog ordinance, you know, and things, so I would love to get more information on that. Not a 100% yes on the, but I still want to explore and learn more. Because I do want to, I think it is fair for us to analyze what are the real negatives of this.
Okay, so I will tell you, I've gotten four yeses on this so far, so we'll get staff to come back and present to us at some point in the future.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you for bringing that up.
The time is 7:27, we're at the end of work session, and we will move into the council chambers for the special calls section at 7:30.
Good evening, everybody. The time is 7:36 PM and here we're going to move into the regular session of the special call meeting of the Capel City Council. We're going to suspend the rules and move our citizens' appearance, item number six, to the end of the agenda. So with that, we're going to ask our mayor, Pro Tem Don Carroll, to give our invocation. Would everybody please rise?
Let's pray. Father, we come to you this evening thanking you for this community that you have created for us and provided for us. We thank you for all the material blessings that you give us, but more than that, we thank you for the relationships that you have established. You we thank you that we have all been placed in this community at this time and that we can benefit from each other and lean on each other and learn from each other. Father, we ask that you will be with this meeting tonight in these chambers, that there will be peace and calm and that there will be fruitful discussion. And we will all benefit from the decisions that are made here tonight for the benefit for this community. We just thank you for always taking care of us and always loving us. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. All right, I had mentioned that we were going to suspend the rules. Does anybody have a problem with moving the item number six to the end of the agenda? Seeing none down there, seeing none down here. All right, thank you very much. Item number seven on the agenda is our proclamations. And I would like to ask Presley Easton and crew to please join me down front. It just said Presley. I didn't mean the entire everybody here. I did. I did. I did. I did say crew. Okay, now scooch in together, get close. Y'all are friends. Yeah, there you go. All right. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Capel. And whereas parks and recreation promotes health and wellness, encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas our parks are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all of our citizens and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, the attraction, and retention of businesses and crime reduction. And whereas our parks and natural recreational areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Park and Recreation Month, now therefore I, Wes Mays, Mayor of the City of Capel, do hereby proclaim the month of July as Park and Recreation Month in the City of Capel. And I encourage all citizens to celebrate by getting active outdoors, connecting with nature, visiting one of Capel's many parks or recreational facilities, and creating memories with family and friends. A witness thereof has set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Capel to be affixed this 24th day of June, 2025. Congratulations. Did you have something you needed to say?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We are so excited to celebrate Park and Recreation Month with everyone. We're kicking off the fun this Saturday, if you haven't heard, at Celebrate Capel Party in the Park at 6:00 PM. We'll have great bands, lots of food trucks, and of course, the Drone and Fireworks Show. Next Friday on Independence Day, we have the Parade Down Parkway beginning at 9:00 AM. Applications are still open if you haven't gotten yours in yet. You can find all the information for both of these events at celebratecapel.com. In the next few days, we'll also be posting a calendar highlighting events, programs, and performances at each of our facilities for you to get out, get active, and have fun this July in honor of Park and Recreation Month. We have our summer activity guides out in the lobby on our website in each of our facilities where you can find all the fun we have going on, not just this July, but all throughout the rest of the summer. So feel free to grab one and see how you can get involved and have fun. Thank you, everyone. We hope to see you around town and at our events.
Thank you very much. Are you guys good for a photo if we get in real close and okay? Okay, item number eight is a discussion regarding the budget primer and Jessica Amarindas is here to present. Jessica?
Okay. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. And let me progress. Okay. We are here tonight. As last night, we hosted our first budget workshop. And just in order to equip you and prepare you for the upcoming budget workshops, we're here in an effort just to write, provide you a little bit more information to give you that foundational knowledge for the upcoming workshops for the budget season. So with that, let's get started. Okay, so there's many things that we hear about what makes Capel the place you want to be. Amongst these fall into four different categories. The categories are going to be the first one, which is public safety. Public safety makes up about 43% of the general fund budget, which this includes our police and fire departments. They all, every year, we always hear that they earn top recognitions. This, they do a lot of partnerships with our school districts for the School Resource Officers Program. Amongst that, we also have our fire department, which staffs four fire departments, soon to be five. And this helps maintain the ISO one rating. They also offer CPR training and also child safety seat installation amongst many other community programs they offer. The other category we hear is our public works. That makes up about 15% of our general fund budget, which they maintain our streets, our alleyways, our traffic systems and city facilities. They also ensure that we have a clean and safe water every time we turn on the tap. The next category we hear that of that makes up a place that Capel and businesses want to be is culture and recreation, which makes up about 18% of our general fund budget, which includes the library, the core, the art center, the senior center, the back and the tenant center. And they also maintain about 17 parks, which is about 545 acres of land. And they offer throughout the year diverse programs and community events throughout the year. And our last category will be community development, which makes up about 5% of our general fund budget. They shape really the the city's look and feel. They support business development and also neighborhoods. And they focus on maintaining of high quality of life for our residents and also our business community. So really, our key takeaway as staff and we putting all this together is that we are here to serve and provide exceptional services to our community. Okay, so how does staff know what to do? The staff knows what to do because the city manager's office ensures that we are provided communication and we are informed and aligned with the city's council's goals each year. There are city, the city council's goals are foundation is based on Vision 2040, the strategic plan. And before that, there was a Vision 2030 and a Vision 2020. And that is shaped by extensive community input, and that is how we know what to do. And Capel really looks and feels the way it does because council has listened to residents and used their input to guide decisions. And city staff translate the community vision into budgets that reflect city prior or the community's priorities. Council supports that vision by making policy choices that align with that vision. So the challenge really is now that we have, how now that we ask, how do we pay for all these things is the question that residents want. As revenue options are limited, we must be strategic. We have to be thoughtful and we have to be sustainable. So that's why the budget process is very important and it helps us prioritize and fund what matters the most to our community. What is a municipal budget? And really, the municipal budget, what we often hear, we hear that it's a financial plan. But really, it's not just a financial plan. It's multiple, there's multiple factors and key roles that it plays. The first one is a policy document. It translates council's goals into actionable financial plans. As I mentioned, it is a financial plan. It manages revenues and expenditures. And it's an operations guide because it connects department work to strategic goals. It tracks performance and progress. It also communicate, it's a communications device. It helps residents understand the city's visions, the city's finances and services. And it's a values document because it reflects our stewardship of public resources and our commitment to transparency. So what we'll cover tonight, it's going to be a little bit about the fund structure. What are the funds? Why do we use them? We're also going to talk a little bit about the budget. Why do we budget and what is the process? We're also going to talk lastly about the property tax rate. How do we calculate and adopt the tax rate? And that's going to include a little bit about the non-revenue rate and the voter approval tax rate. Okay, so let's start with the funds. Because it's really important to build that knowledge to understand how different funds are used, their revenue sources, and their unique purpose to work before we discuss the overall budget. So in government, fund accounting is the unique system designed to track and to report financial activities focusing on accountability rather than profitability. So each fund is a separate self-contained set of accounts, assets and liabilities, revenues and expenditures. So unlike businesses that prioritize net income, cities use fund accounting to demonstrate transparency and also stewardship of public resources. Cities separate their finances into different funds. And this is also based on legal and policy restrictions and also on the specific purpose of for which the funds can be used. For example, as we talked last last evening, we talked about the special revenue funds, which one of the funds was the CCPD fund, which had legal and policy restrictions surrounding how we can use revenues. For the CCPD fund, we can exclusively use that fund for crime prevention programs and services. So the city does use three fund categories, which is the governmental funds and the proprietary funds and the fiduciary funds. So now let's dive a bit deeper into the governmental funds. Under the governmental funds, there's fund category or fund types. So Capel has five different governmental fund types. The general fund is our our largest fund. The general fund is our largest fund. It's used to support general operations and maintenance of the city. It determines service levels and overall maintenance of the community. Its major revenue sources will be property tax, sales tax, franchise fees, fines, and also charges for services. Property tax and sales tax together made up about 82% of the fiscal year 25 general fund revenues. We also, one of our other governmental funds is going to be the debt service fund. We have the general debt service fund, which records the revenue generated by the interest and sinking portion of the tax rate, as well as the principal and interest payments for general obligation and certificate of obligation bonds supported by property taxes. We also have the CRDC debt service fund, which records the debt issued for Capel Recreation Development Corporation projects, along with dedicated sales tax for tax revenue needed to make the principal and interest payments on that debt. We, amongst the governmental funds, we also have the special revenue funds, which are used to account for revenues that are legally restricted for specific purposes, as we spoke last night. And again, examples are the CRDC, CCPD, the AHOT and IMF are amongst the other ones that we covered last night. Then we have the capital projects, which are the funds that are used for the acquisition of construction and of facilities and infrastructure such as streets and buildings. And lastly, we have a permanent fund, which are used to record resources that are legally restricted so that only the earnings are able to be utilized, not the principal. And for example, although the cemetery is a special revenue fund, this, the city sets aside 15% of the revenue from the self plots and niches into that permanent fund. So the earnings from this fund will be used to maintain the cemetery once all the plots and niches are sold. So next, we have the proprietary funds, which this category is, we have two. It's the enterprise fund and the internal service funds. For the enterprise fund, we use to account for operations that were the intent is that the city recover the cost of services provided through user charges. Capel has one enterprise fund, which is the water sewer fund, as also was covered last night. And we also have the internal service funds that are used for account for goods or services provided by one fund to the other. The city has three internal service funds, which are the self-funded health fund, the capital replacement fund, and the enterprise solutions replacement fund. So now that we understand the city's funds, that we can move forward into the budget process. Okay. So why do we prepare a budget, you may ask? First, really, it's required by law. Local government code, Chapter 102, requires that we prepare a municipal budget each year to cover the city's proposed expenditures for the upcoming fiscal year. So in addition, we also have charter requirements. The city manager must prepare and submit a proposed budget to city council for review and adoption. So both the local government code and the charter require that we have a public hearing and, on the budget and also on the tax rate. So we also have to provide notices of the hearing to be published on the city's official newspaper. The local government code states that after the public hearing is held, the city council must formally adopt the budget. And also, according to city, to the city charter, the city manager must present a balanced budget. So in other words, expenditures must be balanced with the available revenue and the fund balance. Now I'd like to cover two of our main planning and budgeting documents. The first one is the five-year forecast. So the first five-year forecast is an internal planning tool. It includes the current fiscal year plus four years into the future. This document addresses both maintenance and operations. And it's a long-term, it's essentially long-term planning regarding improvements on infrastructure. It is updated annually, and we use it internally to identify trends and address them proactively. And then the second document we have is the budget, which covers a single year's maintenance and operations, and it is formally adopted by council. So in addition, we also, you'll see amendments to that formal budget brought to you throughout the year as new items come. For example, in, in May, May 27th, the DAR project was approved by council. So since this occurred throughout the year after the budget was adopted, that would have to become as a budget amendment because that was brought forth after the budget was adopted. Okay. Here, it's the phases of the budget cycle. So I'd like to show you this process because as good stewards of the city's resources, the budget process does go through a thorough vetting and prioritizing process. And it does also go through a process of receiving community input and council input before it is proposed. The, so the first phase of the budget preparation is going to be, the first phase is the budget preparation phase. So during this process, we have council, so it starts with the five-year forecast, really. But then we, from there, in January, we have the council retreats. From there, we'll have a process of departmental reviews, where departments have the opportunity to submit their budgets, and then their budgets are reviewed by staff and by the city manager's office. From there, we have a process of developing the proposed budget, and we have budget workshops to present that to you. And then we have the appraisal role that is received, usually around July. And then from, once that phase passes, we have the filing of the proposed budget. From that point, we have the budget approval phase. So this second phase really occurs in August, and it includes public hearings on both the budget and the tax rate. The budget ordinance is adopted first, followed by the adoption of the tax rate and a separate vote to ratify the, the tax rate increase if the budget requires more revenue from property taxes than in the prior year. This, this year, all three actions are scheduled to occur on August 26. So the final phase is the annual audit. This occurs in January. The audit also compares the original budget to the final budget in actual revenues and expenditures of all city funds. So this really closes out that fiscal year. Here are some key dates. The key, the dates in blue represent the opportunity where citizens could come and engage with the budget process. It really began in Town Hall on April the 10th, where residents were provided, we had a new different format, and we had the opportunity for residents to come and engage. And they provided a lot of input, which we can now find actually in our city's website under Town Hall. So last night, we also held our CCPD public hearing and our first budget workshop. And next, we'll have workshops, as you can see here, on July the 7th, then July the 28th. And next are filing by charter on, required on August the 5th. And from that point, we'll have what, a lot of the public hearings, like the August the 12th, we'll have another public hearing for the Crime Control and Prevention District. And lastly, that would, the last date, it was going to be August the 26th for this expected adoption of, of the tax and budget. And also that night, we'll have some public hearings before that. So now, next, I would like to talk a little bit about the property taxes, or the property tax process. So truth and taxation process ensures that property owners are informed about our appraisal values increases and provides transparency by requiring cities to publish their non-revenue rate and their voter approval tax rate. They also are required, we're also required to hold an election if the adopted tax rate exceeds the voter approval rate and host a public hearing before adopting a higher tax rate. The slide here is showing you other taxing entities that contribute to your total, total property tax bill. It also lists the rates for each entity. It's really easy to assume that one tax bill means one entity, but that's not the case. It's multiple entities. So in addition to the city of Capel, your bill includes the school district and the county. The school district makes up the largest portion of your tax bill. In Dallas County, as you can see here on the screen, the makes up, it's made out of the county, the hospital district, and also the college district, totaling .433095. The city of Capel tax rate is .458632. And all those, these amounts, again, appear on one single bill. Each entity is legally independent and sets its own tax rate. The county sends out the bill, collects the payments, and then distributes each share. This is a great example of how governments work together to, to be good stewards of the taxpayers' resources. It's more efficient to send one bill than provide several bills. So this next slide is showing you how the taxable value of property is determined. So as a reminder, the appraisal district is the one who determines property values, not the city. So we begin with the appraised value and then subtract any exemptions on the property that the owner may qualify for, with the result being the taxable value of the property. As a reminder, the city council has approved the, a 5% homestead exemption, also a $100,000 over 65 and disabled persons exemption. And also, the, has approved a free port exemption, which is on personal property exemption for goods that are detained in the state for 175 days or less. So here's a brief overview of the process for determining and approving the tax rate. So it really begins with the appraisal districts providing certified property values. This happens on July 25th of every year. And it, it ends with the tax assessor mailing bills in October. From this, I would like to highlight on August the 12th, which is the day the council is scheduled to vote on the maximum tax rate to be considered for adoption. From here, I would like to talk a little bit more now about the property tax rate. So our current tax rate, as I mentioned, is .458632 per 100 valuation. I provided an overview of the property tax process. Now I would like to just briefly explain the tax rate, how the tax rate is calculated. So the top row buttons on this slide shows that the total tax rate is comprised of the maintenance and operation, which is, or the MNO, which is shown by the green button and represents the revenue from the general fund. And also the, it shows the INS or the interest and sinking portion of this, of the property tax rate, which is designated by the purple button and represents revenue for the debt service fund. The total rate is a combination of both the MNO and the interest and sinking rate, the INS rate, giving us the total of .458632, as you can see in the red button. The second row buttons on this slideshow shows you the formula used to calculate the property tax revenue to be received by the city. So again, remember, a portion of the total revenue goes to the general fund and a portion goes to the debt service fund. Also, keep in mind that the tax bill you receive represents, again, property paid not only to the city, but also to the school district and the county. So you receive one bill that is allocated by three different entities. This slide shows the simplified calculation of the non-revenue rate. There is a legal requirement to calculate both the non-revenue rate and the voter approval tax rate. This slide provides you the first one. The actual non-revenue calculation is three pages long, so this is just like a simplified format of that. So this next slide provides you, again, the simplified calculation of the voter approval tax rate. The actual calculation is also three pages long. And there's another three pages of adjustments for, for various adjustments for both the non-revenue and the voter approval tax rate. If you would like to see the actual tax rate calculation, I would just provide you to go to the city's website on our budget document in the last pages. You'll find the calculation. Lastly, I would like to just leave you with some resources as you're navigating this budget season and this budget process. You will find on our city's website multiple resources. The first one is our annual operating budget for fiscal year 25. Also, our budget in briefs for the last years. And our five-year forecasts, you'll find there for the most recent for fiscal year 25 through 29. And our annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal, or for year 24, fiscal year 24. And to visit or to view all these resources, again, I would, I would visit and go to the transparency page and strategic financial engagement page to find all these resources and more. So. And that should conclude my presentation, and I would be happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you, Jessica. You've had a busy couple of days so far. Council, you have any questions on, for Jessica? I think after last night, we're, we're questioned out. So thank you very much. Appreciate the time tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Item number nine is consider approval of the minutes for June 10th, 2025. I'll just need a motion and a vote on this one. Motion, second, and vote. Councilmember Neville's, a second? Councilmember Hinahosa Smith, and all in favor?
Walker Hinahosa Smith, Carol Neville, Prem Kumar, Matthew Hill, none opposed. Motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Item number 10 is our city manager reports with project updates, future agendas, and directions from workstation, work session. And we would like to welcome Ms. Leach to the dais.
Thank you, Mayor. It has been a minute, but I am pleased to be here tonight. I have a few things to share. So first, our city offices will be closed on July 4th. With the exception of the Core and Wagon Wheel Tennis and Pickleball Center, and those have amended hours, they will be, the Core will be open from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The outdoor pool will be open from 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM. And then the Wagon Wheel Tennis and Pickleball Center will open at 7:00 AM and close at 5:30. For our update on the work session item related to chickens and chicken coops, staff did receive direction to conduct some additional due diligence and bring back information to the council so that they can continue their discussion on this issue. And finally, I wanted to provide an update on the cybersecurity event. So many people watching here and residents of our community, we were, were impacted by the cybersecurity event that happened this past October. And letters went out last Thursday, so residents and businesses have begun to receive those. So like similar letters you may have received from other companies that have also experienced a data breach, the letter informs the recipient that there was a breach. It outlines the actions that we took to mitigate the breach and provides information about how to enroll in free credit monitoring. So due to the age of some of the data that was compromised, we know that some letters were sent to individuals who may not live in Capel anymore or who may have experienced significant life or family changes since their time in Capel. So for example, we are legally required to send the notice to the address and information listed in the compromise documents for the individuals who, for whom personal identifiable information or personal health information was obtained, even if that person does not live in Capel any longer or if they've had a major life change. So we, we do sincerely apologize for the stress and in some of these very particular sensitive situations, consternation and emotional distress that this has, the letters have caused some of our residents and victims of the cyber attack. We do have several avenues to find out more information if you do receive a letter and have questions about the letter. First, residents can call 877-580-7778 and supply the fraud specialist with the unique code that is listed on your letter. The call center representative should be able to provide assistance and answers to most of your questions. However, if you would still like to speak to somebody here at the city, we do have a city representative that you can call and get additional information. The contact name for that is Justin Vaughn, and he is at 972-304-3611. And finally, if you'd just like to look on the website, we do have a lot of resources related to the cyber event on our website at www.capeltx.gov/outage. That page contains a FAQ with a lot of questions that we have received from, from multiple individuals, as long as additional detailed information about that cyber attack. So we, we are sincerely apologetic to our community and those that were impacted. And we hope that we will be able to move, move forward from here. That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Item number 11 is the mayor and council reports on recent and upcoming events. I do have a couple of items coming up. I hope everybody heard our Parks and Rec Department talk about Celebrate Capel. But we're having a, a, a party down at the park this Saturday, June 28th, from 6:00 to 10:30 PM at Andy Brown Park East. We're going to have live music, two bands, I believe, lawn games, our drone show, and of course, our spectacular fireworks display. Celebrate Capel is a pedestrian-friendly event, and then walking is encouraged. You can find more information about the event, including accessible parking, on our city website, capeltx.gov. Then to continue our Independence Day celebration week, we have Parade Down Parkway. Then to continue our Independence Day celebration week, we have parade down Parkway on Friday, July 4th, starting at 9:00 a.m., and we will celebrate our Independence Day, beginning with that parade. The parade will begin at the corner of Samuel Boulevard and Sandy Lake Road. From there, we'll walk north on Samuel to Parkway, and then west to Town Center. Applications for the parade down Parkway are still open, and if you're interested in being part of the parade but miss the application deadline, then we have some good news. We've extended that deadline to Sunday, June 29th. That's this Sunday. There's no entry fee, but an application is required to participate. Budget workshop number two, as Jessica was talking about, is on Monday, July 7th, at 6:00 p.m. Council will hear from staff and discuss the general operating budget. The general fund is the city's largest fund, and we'll also hear from staff and discuss the debt service fund used to account for the accumulation of financial resources for the payment of principal interest and related costs for general long-term debt, paid primarily from taxes as levied by the city. Then, following that, budget workshop number three is on Monday, July 28th, at 6:00 p.m. Council will perform a final review of the proposed budget and discuss the proposed tax rate. Okay. Item number 12 is council committee reports concerning items of community development with no council action or deliberation permitted. Item A is report on the Woven Health Clinic. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Woven Healthcare will be participating in the Carrollton Farmer's Branch ISD Back to School Fest at Ranchview High School in Valley Ranch on August the 2nd at 9:00 a.m., and that runs until noon. The next event, Woven, will be in partnership with the Essilor Luxottica Vision Foundation, and will offer free vision exams and glasses at their Farmer's Branch location on July the 8th from 8:00 to 5:00, and then at their Carrollton location on July the 9th from 9:00 to 5:00. More details, go to wovenhealth.org. In partnership with Methodist, Woven Health will have a Methodist mobile mammography unit onsite at their Farmer's Branch location, providing essential cancer screenings for their patients on September 23rd from 9:00 until 3:00, and this is by appointment only. And go to wovenhealth.org for more details. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item number B is report on Metrocrest Services with Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. This is stats from the Metrocrest. This is for the six-month period from October 2024 to May 2025. About 681 unduplicated residents have been provided service with the Metrocrest. That's from Capel. 576 residents visited the food pantry at the Carrollton facility. And the summer program, summer feeding program, and SAC Summer Hunger is providing 47 Capel children with nutritious food during the summer break. Thirty-eight households received emergency rent and utility assistance totaling about $62,986. And last month, we had a presentation from the CEO of Metrocrest, Tracy Eubank here, and he also stressed the significance of increasing the funding, or asked from the city, because the federal funding is cut in many of the other charitable organizations. So that is another outstanding or pending request from the Metrocrest to the city of Capel. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I continue to be amazed at the services that they provide. Item number C is report from the North Central Texas Council of Governments with Councilmember Hina Jose Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually don't have anything to report for this one.
All right. Thank you very much. Item number D is a report from the North Texas Commission. Councilmember Prem Kumar.
Thank you, Mayor. As many of the Capel residents know, the city of Capel partners with North Texas Commission because we need all the support we can get to make sure that our agenda is first and foremost at Austin and Washington, D.C. So we just concluded the 89th Texas Legislative Session, and working with Capel, the North Texas Commission was able to push for increased public education funding. They were able to expand the personal, tangible personal property for businesses from $2,500 to $250,000. And we were also able to fight off Austin's effort to restrict home-rule municipalities like Capel from making changes to a city's government immunity that is made via charter amendments or ordinances. And our city manager, deputy city manager, Ms. Tracy Leach, was talking about the cyber attack. In the 89th Legislative Session, they also approved a cyber command at the University of Texas at San Antonio, which will work with the city governments to help them beef up their security and safety. So our Senator Tan Parker was with NTC to talk to us about the progress in the 89th Legislative Session. NTC also organized a meeting with the U.S. Senator, Mr. Bill Cassidy, from Louisiana, and that meeting was focused on the federal healthcare policy and its impact on North Texas. And finally, the commission has been working with the U.S. Department of State, Secretary Catherine Ho, on the latest DFW International Collective Meeting. This group works to strengthen international partnerships and prepare our region for increased global engagement, especially in border with the 2026 World Cup on the horizon. And North Texas is going to be significantly impacted by the 2026 World Cup. That is all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item number E is report from the Historical Society with Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. The Capel Historical Society hosted the second installment of its Capel History Talks series on Saturday, May 24th, at 11:00 a.m. at Cosby Library. Dr. Richard McLellan, a history professor at the University of Texas, a renowned expert on Texas history, delivered a fascinating presentation. He's the author of numerous books and articles on topics, including Texas history, the Texas Rangers, and the Civil War. Some of the topics that he covered, why Texas is called the Lone Star State. The nickname Lone Star State reflects the Texas former status as an independent republic. The single star stands for the Texas struggle for independence from Mexico and its pride in being a sovereign nation. And he has also talked about origin and the history of Texas state flag. The current Texas state flag was adopted in 1839. It features the vertical blue stripe with the single white star, and horizontal white and red stripes. This design symbolized the loyalty, the blue, the purity, white, and bravery, the red. We have a flag right here. Those of you all watching online can look at it. The next meeting will be second Saturday of July at 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. Location is Heritage Park, 700 South Capel Road. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number 13 are public service announcements concerning items community interest with no council action or deliberation permitted. I did want to report that the DFW Airport Board of Directors heard a report last week stating that they're actually going to see a decrease in passenger traffic for the first time since COVID. They've been extrapolating an increase in passenger traffic for the next 10 years, and they've had to readjust their models a bit. They're actually seeing a drop from 89 million passengers through the airport to 88 million. So I had no clue that the passenger traffic was that high through DFW, but obviously, we benefit from that. Then, secondly, on Sunday, the First United Methodist Church wished Reverend Tom Palmer farewell as he retired. I don't know exactly how many citizens were in the sanctuary, but there was standing room only, and they ran out of spare chairs. So it was a very well-attended service, and Tom Palmer was brought to tears. All right. There was no necessary action from executive session, so we will take up item number six, which is our citizens' appearances. Persons wishing to speak must sign the register and list their address. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to three minutes each. Person signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks shall be made by the speaker against any member of the council, mayor, individual, group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberations from the city council due to the Texas Open Meetings Act. We do have three people signed up to speak tonight. The first is Ms. Diane Walker. And by the way, we're preparing to get those steps fixed, so they're not so hard to walk down.
Just a little handrail would be nice.
Well, we're going to get rid of the steps completely.
And by the way, we had over 600 people at the church on Sunday.
I thought there was more than that.
I said over.
[laughing]
We had enough box lunches for 600, and many of the crew that put it together did not get to eat. So it was well-attended.
I hate to be formal, but name an address for the record.
I will. Thank you. My name is Diane Walker. I live at 214 Barclay Avenue here in Capel. As of next Monday, I will celebrate my 30th anniversary as a Capel homeowner. I had the privilege, as a single mom, to raise my son in Capel, because I knew it was a small-town community with excellent schools. But with the demands of raising my son by myself and having a busy career at a CPA firm, I had little time for friends and the social life up until I retired. It was three years ago when I finally retired, and I was very concerned about what my new social life would be. But I have a good friend, Sherry Neffels, that has been very active at the senior center for several years. She encouraged me to visit the senior center and join in on the various activities. The rest, as they say, is history. I now attend several of the activities each week, and I'm interested in joining more that I haven't tried yet. There are times that I just show up at the center to see who's there, or hang out and read a book. I have also recently become more involved with the center as one of the volunteers that helps make the activities happen. I have made many new friends. This is my story. But the other seniors at the center have similar stories of wanting to be active and social at this stage of life, and the city of Capel has made this possible. The majority of the seniors that I know at the senior center are 25- to 35-year Capel homeowners. We have funded the center with our property taxes, just as we funded our IRAs for our retirement. The senior center keeps us physically and mentally active for a longer period of time in life, so that we can continue to stay in our Capel homes and support the senior center with our property taxes. I just wanted all of you to know the importance of the senior center has on the senior community of Capel. Sometimes I wonder what I would be doing if Capel didn't have a senior center, and then I laugh, because Capel does not want a bunch of aging baby boomers running the streets with nothing to do. Thank you for your support of the senior center and your senior citizens. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments tonight. We appreciate it. Our second speaker tonight is Mr. Alex Stein.
Hello, council. My name's Alex Stein. I live at 7509 Inwood Road, and, you know, hello, let's see. I don't know if this will be better.
Hello. Yeah, this is probably a little better. Okay, so Mayor, this is pretty embarrassing. You know, I know Capel's supposed to be a city of excellence, but when you see primetime 99 Alex Stein, the pimp on a blimp, walk in, you're going to change the whole freaking meeting and put me at the end. Makes it seem like you're a little scared. I mean, you don't need to listen to the homosexual and the transgender next to you to try to decide how to run this meeting. You can have some cojones and deal with your constituents, and you don't have anything to be scared of. I'm not going to bite you. I'm not going to hurt you. Yeah, I might comment that half the council's bald, and I might, you know, comment that half the council is a bunch of geriatrics that probably don't even really care about this city and only care about trying to create some sort of legacy so when they die, people remember them. But sadly, because you guys are so scared to actually go out there and take chances, nobody here will probably remember any of you. I mean, maybe some of the Indian guys, because you guys sent girls messages saying like, oh, you have bobs and vagines, stuff like that, you know? Maybe, and, you know, this councilman, Kevin Neils, he looks like a total perv. I mean, he's a total freak. And I had some serious-
Mayor.
What?
Point of order, please.
Point of order?
What's your point of order?
What's the point of order? I think he is, the wording that you read before, I believe that he is-
What's the wording, Kevin?
Mr. Stein, you need to constrain your comments.
Okay, I will. You guys always turn off the camera. See, now I got this camera. See, I'm looking at it. You guys are so scared to even show me on your camera. That's how cowardly you guys are. You guys are pathetic, you know, a bunch of scared bald people that are afraid to hear from the constituents. They have to turn off the camera. See, yeah, I have to turn around and look at the camera, because they want to hide my face, because they don't want to get exposed for being little girls, really, at the end of the day. So I just want to say, the main reason I came out here is to shout out DeRoe. DeRoe's a popular rapper from DFW. His new song, "Uptown," is coming out this week. I want to give you guys a little preview of that. So shout out DeRoe. DeRoe's not a coward like you guys, like you council that have to turn off the camera and be so scared. But I'm primetime 99. I'm a pimp on a blimp, and just like DeRoe, I'm a, you know, I'm a badass rapper too, so you guys get to hear a little bit of DeRoe's music. This is exclusive. Nobody's got this music yet. Let's go. DeRoe in this house. Don't be a baby back. Don't be white. You gotta be black. It's a hit, baby Dallas. We're coming back. DeRoe music. I love you, DeRoe. I'm sick of these council members. They don't have any hair. They all have bad attitudes. I'm sure their wives left them for the ones that were, they're probably all homosexuals, which is fine. Not that there's anything wrong with that. But when you're a pimp on a blimp like myself, and you got all this testosterone, when you walk into a room, the homosexuals usually cower in fear. And that's what this, that's what this mayor did. The mayor just, you know, changed up the whole order of the meeting, because they're scared of primetime 99, a pimp on a blimp. So just remember that. When you guys go to bed tonight, this council that can't even see me, remember that. You're scared of me, and you're a little big bitch. All right.
The next speaker is listed as Johnny Beetlejuice.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Johnny Beetlejuice. My address is 6301 Riverside Drive, and I just want to thank you for your time. And, you know, I have an incredibly serious matter to attend to, nuclear war. So I'm an American patriot, and I want you to know how Capel can help with the Iran and Israel strikes. So the Islamic Republic of Iran, under the rule of Ayatollah Ali Khomeini, continues to sponsor terrorism, destabilize the Middle East, and pursue nuclear capabilities that threaten the most important country in the world, Israel. And as you know, Iran was just minutes away from a nuclear bomb at the time of our beautiful commander-in-chief, Donald J. Trump, sending those stealth bombers to blow their nuclear facilities to smithereens. Oh, my gosh, I have to turn-
Sir, no comments from the audience, please.
Oh, my gosh, I have to turn around. Okay. Well, there's more for everyone else here. So the time for half-measures has passed. As Lindsey Graham said, a U.S. senator and known heterosexual, we need U.S. boots on the ground in Iran, and we need it now. If the United States is to uphold its role as a leader of the free world and defender of Israel, we must be willing to take decisive actions, military if necessary. And if there are anti-Semites who don't want to send U.S. troops to Iran because they think Iraq and Afghanistan were a disaster, refresh my memory, because I remember 2003 was one heck of a time. I drank Bud Light while watching us invade Iraq, and that's actually how I met my wife, at a Daytona biker bar, the same one that serial killer Ali Morinos used to frequent. But I call on Capel City Council and all of Capel to stand united and put the Ukraine and Israel flags in your social media bios. Anyways, Iran's regime is not merely hostile, it's aggressive. It arms and funds terrorist groups like Hezbollah, Hamas, and Queers for Palestine. They indulge in disgusting behaviors with the Bakabazi Boys, and they rarely shower. They must be destroyed. Deterrence requires credibility. Credibility requires Lockheed Martin bombs. And if we're not willing to use force- And if we're not willing to use force, meaning bombs, missiles, and more bombs, then we should not pretend to lead. This is not about conquest. It's about defense. So thank you, Mayor of Capel, and please stand as we fight and bomb Iran. Thank you very much. Johnny Beetlejuice is my time.
I would like to ask to consult with the city attorney at this time. So good evening, everybody. We're back from executive session. There was no action necessary from executive session. So there being no further business before this body, we're adjourned at 8:32 p.m.